Okay, so here we go. Let's go ahead and get started. Thank you for having this all set up and ready to go. So we're calling the meeting to order any agenda amendments? Anyone? No, so we're good. Okay, and public comments? I don't see anybody with anything. All right, so let's talk about the approval of our September 19th board minutes. Who's taking minutes tonight?
I'm sorry, Tamara is sick. She tried to work today, but was coughing. So I am recording the minutes.
Oh, okay.
And it picks up, the microphone picks up quite well.
That's amazing.
And I'm doing a few ancillary notes.
Good.
I'm organized, with ten minutes.
Thank you, that's awesome. That's awesome. So did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Hold on a second.
But that'll be on there. Megan, John, okay? Any discussion? She's very thorough in the notes.
She is.
Yeah, and also the video is up. The video of the meeting, too.
I want to check those.
Yeah, the video of the meeting is up. I was looking to find all these things. Anyway, so the video's up, so, okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passed. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Now we get an after-school presentation.
And Carol is coming, but we should probably check the door.
Yeah, and actually I loved it. Do you have yours? And if we think for Acia, what time is she coming?
For six.
Okay. Well, I'll go check, just see if you let me in, and then I'll.
Thank you. Okay, and we can move on.
Yes.
While we're waiting, if that's okay with you, Lori, or we could sign something else. Lori, is that okay with you?
Yep.
I don't know where Lori came from.
That's okay.
Sorry. I'm meeting my good friend Lori this weekend.
Everybody does have their C to L O, they automatically go to.
Thank you. Oh, that's.
So, we have a financial report for the month of September for the current fiscal year in front of you, as well as draft one of the fiscal year 20 budget, and the snowplowing bids as they were received. Just kind of put together in a spreadsheet, we'll make that a little bit easier. The financial report, I don't really have much to say about the financial report. Swanton's still in really good shape for the current year. There was some, basically some new hires that you had this year with resignations that we hadn't budgeted for, and that's just providing some savings. The only thing that's really changed since the last draft is the special ed assessments have now been updated. So you'll see some variances in that column there, and we'll continue to monitor those. Not much to say about that. That was emailed out to you, so if you have questions.
Anything stand out for anybody that we should discuss, or?
No.
Okay, so what should we do with this at this point?
Usually for the financial report, usually you just accept. Make a motion to accept.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the financial report.
We have financial report for this one? Anybody second?
I'll second.
Megan seconded. Any discussion?
Is there anything we need to do for the plowing at this?
Yeah, that's on the list there. So I was gonna, yeah, just handed everything out at time, sorry.
That's good. We're approving the 28-19, right, at this point?
Usually that's the one to accept, yeah.
That's what you meant, right?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks, I just wanted to be clear. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, nay? Ayes passed. Thank you. Should we keep going through financials, or should we take a little side fire?
Do you want to just finish up?
Why don't we finish financials?
Is that okay?
Sure.
If you don't mind. I mean, we're gonna finish the financials.
Okay. Just give you this.
And so John and Toby have the check warrants for the month of September as well?
All right. We'll make the most that we approve the check warrants for September 2018. An amount of $553,562.63.
I will second that.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Any other warrants or anything there, John? That's it, right?
For warrants, that's it, yeah. Okay, and then you also have in front of you draft one of the fiscal year 20, proposed school budget for Swanton. This is a very preliminary draft at this point. It's extremely early, so basically what we do at this point is evaluate salary and benefits for the current staff. So we are most definitely to be negotiating for the professional staff, because the current master agreement ends this fiscal year. And so I've added a moderate increase in here, but obviously that's to be determined. I just wanted to have a placeholder. As far as support staff, reunion support staff, we know that the contract has been negotiated for them for fiscal year 20, and it's 50 cents on the base for those employees. So that has been included in this draft. All non-union employees, so that's your office staff, custodians, those, they are now about at 3% in this draft, but that's purely, again, a placeholder. It's just for discussion purposes for the board. I'd just like to include something. Other than that, contracted services, I've added 3%, again, placeholder at this point. Assessments, I've added 2.5% to those. Those, the first drafts will be going to the Franklin Northwest meeting at the upcoming meeting. The one thing that's helping you, if you'll notice at the bottom line of this budget on your last page, the increase over last year is very small compared to your first drafts that you've seen in prior years. One of the largest reasons for that is if you look also on that last page at people transportation, and if you remember last meeting I shared with you that they're now having us net the revenue out prior to the assessment coming to the local level, we can't report it any differently, even though we knew that the revenue was coming to the SU. So that's providing $127,000 reduction in that line to the bottom line of your budget. Helps the bottom line of your budget, but as far as tax rate calculation and spending, which is what people vote on now, it will, you know, just net itself out. So you won't have that benefit there, but bottom line of your budget looks good.
Does it not really show up in the SU budget?
It always has.
Well, not always, but recent years.
Recent, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so winners and losers can make out neutral.
Yeah, yeah, basically at the local level now, you'll have less revenue, but less expense. So it's a wash, but the other thing that's kind of helping you as far as instructional salaries and professional staff is, again, like I know, I mentioned a few minutes ago about your financial report, is you've had some changes in staff in the current fiscal year that we budgeted higher than what we needed to, and that's actually helping you coming into this year. So if you look at your, on the front page, your teachers' salaries under 110. For the budget, it's like 2.2 million, 2273. The anticipated is much lower than that, because we hired people out of, you know, BA Step 1, BA Step 2. And then the proposed isn't, is actually just very slightly over what we budgeted last year.
So I'm just curious if you, if we were to talk in terms of how much is salary and how much is budget? Is it still like 90-10, or 85-15, do you know?
86, 87, probably.
But, so we're better than a lot that are, I mean, it's harder for some people, but it makes more work for you all with new teachers, I would imagine.
Is there any reason we use a different percentage for non-union people than we did for, I guess if you looked at what you put in for professional staff?
Professional staff?
I mean, we don't need to get, we can talk about it in executive session, but just looking at percentages.
Yeah.
There was a greater percentage. Okay.
And 3%, it's just been historically what we start with. We throw it in there as a placeholder.
3%?
Three, for non-union typically, just as a placeholder purely.
Is there a way that we can look at what the unionized staff gets? I don't mean teachers, but prepared educators. Can we look at that and see what 50 cents on the base would equal in a percentage of the people who are fairly new, the people who've been here a long time, or maybe somebody in the middle?
So we can go. Oh, as far as a percentage?
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yep, yeah.
I would be interested at some point seeing that.
Some of the highest paid, your veteran, veteran pairs are about 1750 right now an hour. Then you have the new people coming in at 1120. 11, 1120.
And I'm sure it's been done here, but I know on my work at town day review board, and I think it's been district-wide, we've really tried to take, getting people's salaries up. So we're competitive to get initial hires. So I would, it's okay. I like data, so I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
That's a good, good point.
And Laura, with the Act 46 recommendation coming through, is this totally going to change? Or is this?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know for sure. But we, in talking with Julie, this would be your base. So all local school budgets basically would be pulled together for the year one and dumped into one mega budget.
Unless someone had some huge item that wasn't gonna work.
Right, but basically you still have to evaluate costs at a local level to some degree, especially in year one.
Will year one, if the salary sugars out, be tried July 1-19?
Yes, it would.
Which is this?
So we have a lot to talk about in our update around that, because, but at this point, as Laura said, we would be starting in this way anymore.
Absolutely.
You know, in a merged district in future years, you sometimes like a different one, because you're thinking across the system. But in a single, especially in startup, the only way to move forward is you're building literally a new chart of accounts. You start off with all the local. So things like assessments and things like that would change, would be different.
There's a lot of work in here, makes you guys.
So if we get this right, then the next step will be easier.
Yeah, yeah.
Totally.
Let's.
So I have a, maybe a request or something for us to consider. I know the other schools in the area are, at the fifth and sixth grade level, are playing nine-person soccer, nine versus nine soccer. And that's played on a field with smaller goals. So I'm guessing that would be under the line 431, under play operations, athletic department repair and maintenance. Would it be its equipment?
It could, yeah.
Or 730 maybe? I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what those soccer goals are, but I do think, I know Highgate has the smaller goals now. And with our, with the number of participants, I just think that it's a consideration for us to get goals that are the right size for 99 soccer, which they're smaller. And I don't think they're overly cheap, I don't think they're overly expensive, but it could be maybe a couple thousand dollars that I don't know if we've considered that.
We should put it in, and then we should give them money, and both of them there, but if you don't put it in.
Yeah, I don't, maybe Josh could price those out and let you know.
We're also starting our replacement process for uniforms, because we haven't done that in a while.
Right.
We were hoping not to increase some lines, but stick with that, but if we need to.
I'm not saying that we should do it, although I think we probably should, but, because that's the trend at fifth and sixth grade level, and we have goals that are built for 11, the 11 soccer.
Plus, Toby, I think you're making a really good point, because look at how equipment is going up. To level funds like last year, I think would be a mistake based on trends that we're seeing.
Well, the, that's actually for, if you read the note under, for equipment, fiscal year 19 includes a safety grant match. So that's why that one is going up this year, but you are right in general.
Oh, I was reading that it wasn't going up. I must be looking at the wrong thing. I'm probably looking at computer equipment or something on 730.
I don't think it would be a lot of money.
I think you were under plant maintenance. I thought that's what you were.
Yeah, I got the $10,000 more. Sorry, I thought we were staying level.
The computer equipment, again, there's a note on the computer equipment line. This year, the Medicaid funds were, well, what we spend the Medicaid funds on, or use reimbursement for, was reallocated, and so it used to be for technology, and now that has moved out, so that's in the local level, and the Medicaid's being used for something else. It's like a big jigsaw puzzle, really.
Yeah, it is, isn't it? Especially when equipment varies depending on.
If it's instructional equipment, you don't have the maintenance equipment.
Right. Yeah. I'm sure there's other things like that, too.
It will be changing, because we're gonna all have to have different function and object goals. It's gonna be a big piece of work for the business office we'll have in the merger.
And I think it's in the minutes last time that we realized we weren't gonna be meeting again until December something, and we might have to have a meeting in between, depending on what's going on. So maybe we'll just keep that in mind as we keep going.
Absolutely.
Anything else on this that we want to discuss? Toby, you look like you've got something.
Nope.
No?
Mulling it over.
Yeah, it's one of those moles.
I would just encourage, if anyone else has any kind of ideas or wish lists, now's the time, right? It doesn't mean that we're gonna go to the final budget with it, but, or final proposal with it, but it's better to see it on a proposal than the effects of it. We can always take it out.
Do we know if we have any teachers retiring issue?
I haven't been made aware of that yet.
I don't think so, and they wouldn't let us know quite yet.
Is it in the contract? There is a date that people often want. It's wrapped, the budget is.
It's something.
I think there was a December, but I don't know if it's in the contract or not.
It is, I think.
It is in there. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So maybe it is before.
I think it's, it's have it for us.
It may not be significant, but I think it's just something to keep in mind.
Again, that's one of the things, if you had unexpected savings, because you did budget for some veteran staff and then didn't choose to leave. So it is always helpful if we can know ahead of time.
So here's another consideration for Sol. This is potentially our last Swan School budget, correct, ever?
Well, potentially, it wouldn't be a Swanton budget.
This one that we're gonna be loading on in March?
It all depends on how things go. And I feel like we're jumping around, but it's pertinent to the budget. We had this conversation last night. We've got the lawsuit piece, that we don't know what the timeline on that would be, or an injunction, or any of those things. So let's pretend there's no lawsuits. Let's pretend November 30th, they say you're going to merge, and there's no impediment, and we're just moving forward, okay? If that is the case, within 60 days, there's an organizational meeting, and there's a new entity that exists with a temporary transitional board. That's the board that will put together a budget of the new district.
For voters in March.
For voters in March for implementation in July. Hence, there's a lot of work here.
Sure.
So that board, it will not be an elected board, then?
It will be made up of the board chair and the clerk of each board. And their job will be to prepare a budget and to prepare a slate of permanent elected board members for March. There's some guidance that we have that would say the budget would go in March. And there's some guidance that says we would only be voting on board members who would then adopt the budget the transition board prepared, and then go out to vote maybe early May. So, you know, we, if we get there, you know, there's a lot of considerations to do. But if indeed you have to merge, there, this would not be a Swanton budget. So it's important to put the input in that you think is appropriate. Not like, let's, you know, re-carpet the entire building, but, you know, what is it? What's a responsible? You know, if you identify, your idea of not a wish list, but what are some priorities that we've been talking about for a few years? Your first draft is a very low expenditure increase. So if you have a couple of things that you think that the board wants to discuss in the future, that's really appropriate.
So at this point, if we do have some wish lists, wish, say that one again. If we do have some wishes, do we, meeting law and all that kind of stuff, can we just send them to Deana and Laura, or how do we work that? For you and Laura and Deana? What's appropriate?
I think it would be best if you send them to Deana. And then, because Deana and Laura will sit together and then run numbers, and talk about, you know, well, we've heard about this, but boy, there's other things that seem to be more important. Or, you know, I think that's a really smart thing to do.
So Josh's plans for the coming year are in this budget?
No, not necessarily. We were gonna, we haven't, we haven't talked that much. He's new, so he's looking into cost. We're hoping to not.
Technology, we're talking?
No. Athletics.
No, I think you're actually talking about maintenance, right?
I actually believe you's wrong.
Yes, she meant Jason. But there is Josh, too, right?
There is a Josh. So the money right in here, I believe, there's still, we had increased his maintenance line.
I level funded everything.
Everything's there, and then the additional 25,000 is in.
I level funded everything from last year except for salary benefits.
So it's all in there for the maintenance and the continued renovations, and.
Because that's become a real hot button issue at some of the 46 marchers, that some schools have put a lot in to do, kept up, and others hadn't. I don't think we are in that situation, but I think it'd be extremely important if there's anything that Jason has had in past years as part of a major plan that would get it in this budget that we support discussion.
And it is right now. I think your concern is different, and I don't know if we can do anything about that. I think our plan right now is to move forward. We are trying to be fiscally responsible and not put the whole thing in, but we have a five-year plan. The asbestos work, we've been chipping away at that, and then talking about going through this building little by little to do that. So that's in there right now, but it's at a modest amount, I believe.
But that's a line that most of our other local schools don't have. They don't have an inclusive capital reserve line.
Or a five-year plan?
Some don't have that either.
So here, here's, is there a limit on how far ahead you can warm something?
There's definitely for bonding.
And there is for votes, but.
That's what, like, what's the earliest that something could be warmed for town meeting day?
Oh, I would want to double-check, but I think it's one of those no more than 90 days, no fewer than 30.
So 90 days before town meeting day is January.
I think that's too far.
I think that might be.
It's between 30 and something.
Yeah, I can look it up.
But you're right, there's a wind on it.
There is a window. You can't do it too early.
Because I'm bringing this up because of specifically one big ticket item that went on here at Swan is the, potentially the playground. And if we wanted to do a separate article on that, if they're short on the fundraising, I don't know how receptive a new board would be to putting any extra thing, any item on a newly merged budget. So if we can't have 90 days.
Or 30, or 60, whatever it is.
But I was, it could be one thing that the Swanton board does before the Swanton board doesn't exist.
I think that you would be, and I would need to get advice on it, so this is for what it's worth, you know. The transition board, particularly one that was not elected ahead of time, like the voters, the towns that merged and voted on it, okay, that's different. But even in those transition boards, the scope of what they can do is limited to certain things. The Swanton school board will exist until June 30, okay? And I'm, again, talking about the, if it happens. Putting an article for mourning around a playground, I believe you would still have the authority to do, because it's separate from the school budget. So I think you would still have the authority to do that. So should we get in that position? I think you're gonna be fine.
So you could check that out?
I will definitely check that out.
And can I just, I had, we had talked with Julie and Laura, too, about checking in some agreements and some protections for the playground funds in case that split over a twosummer project, or what have you with the merger. Oh, Julie had said she was going to look into that, too, to.
There's actually no reason. Absolutely. There are a lot of fears around budgets that become merged. And just like your student accounts, student activity accounts at the high school don't get merged with your elementary. Accounts and funds still remain separate. Line items still are assigned to individual schools. There are some things that are merged, and some things that are by school, and all of that is too much and too preliminary. But we can, because there's, people are donating, and we don't want there to be fear around that. And certainly, we don't want to slow down the donations. We want to make sure that there's clarity and protection, that there's some sort of agreement, because any agreements would all go to a new organization. So if there was an agreement making it really clear that these funds are for a particular purpose and remain for that purpose, we would be completely protected around that fund.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
I think, Toby, I don't, I mean, the playground was one of our big concerns. Like, this is budget, but it's the bigger conversation for later. We have a pretty comprehensive five-year plan. And we've really, I believe, gained a lot of momentum with the work that was done this summer. So it's just throwing out there, my question is, what happens with that plan? So.
I think that's why I originally asked, because from my perspective, I think it'd be important for us to look at the five-year plan, see what's been done, and how much remains. And it's possible that in the plan, we have in year three, or four, or five, well, I think we need to look at those and say, how many of those should really be expedited in the discussion? Maybe not in the final budget. I'm just saying, because you don't want to lose that opportunity.
I agree, and I guess the part I don't understand, we could, it feels, my understanding, that we might be a little bit late, but that we can have the conversation, and we can say, let's get it done now. But this is not gonna be our budget, from what Julie just said, if we move forward.
True. I totally agreed on about having that conversation.
It would be a bigger hour budget. And I think if it's in there, then the discussion is easier and different than if you're.
First thing is to get it.
Totally, and I totally agree with that.
So if it means putting two years in there rather than one.
I see what you're saying, okay.
But I say we need to look at that.
I agree. And so you're kind of, I think, planning ahead, so we plan for it, but if we need to call back.
Okay. I think that might be a town meeting.
So the other interesting thing is what we have to remember is voters are not going to be seen. They're not going to be voting on this, they're gonna be voting on something that's gonna be what, in the realm? Of 16 million? Instead of eight?
Well, I know that maybe what runs was 52 million.
Right, all right, so.
And it went, people isn't voting on their 10 million or 20 million.
Remember the high school was going to be merged into the hall.
Right, so the article that they're gonna, voters are gonna be seen is not gonna be 8 million, it's gonna be 25, 30 million.
Yeah, that's a lot of education for our voters. That's for town meeting. There may be special, but if it's a town meeting.
So I think that's good. I think if you're okay with it, that perhaps Toby and Jason and I will look at that. I think you gave a good report last time about what has been done. We got so much done with the support of the board on the moving forward with the budget, some of our carryover. I mean, we did a lot. Our focus, obviously, is hoping that it will be the playground work, but Jason's determined to continue that other piece this summer. So we'll do that, and we'll get those numbers and priorities and bring them back to the board.
Because once we merge, if we merge, then the school is not, it's no longer owned by Swanton. It's owned by the SU, is that correct?
Or the new district.
There wouldn't be an SU.
I don't know about owned so much as operated.
Operated.
Own.
The new district.
I think it's owned.
Wow. Okay, whoa, sorry, back out, sorry. Okay, back out, okay. So that's good, thank you. These are all good concerns, and we're all. So, that's good, thank you. This are, these are all bid concerns, and we're all gonna send some of our concerns individually to Dina, right?
Yeah.
No copying, because if we copy, it breaks, um, meeting law.
Julie, is there, I know that, uh, I was gone last night, but is there a timeline, uh, that we are going to set? Does the state have to set it for us? Cause you know, we talked earlier in the meeting about maybe we need another meeting before January. I, I think this kinda confirms in my mind, we really need to put that one.
Oh, absolutely, I think you have one typically scheduled.
Maybe we need to send her.
Yeah, we were gonna find out what, you were gonna find out, and then we're gonna decide on December the second or third or something like that.
That's January.
Yeah.
December, it's, uh, the nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
January, it was the second or third, yeah.
So you have another record of the scheduled meeting.
We have two, actually.
And at that meeting, you would, depending on lawsuits, you, you would have more of an idea of timelines?
Yeah.
The lawsuit is really the thing that makes us not know what the timeline is at all.
But wouldn't it make sense to assume it's going forward? I mean, that's gonna position us best for getting things in line.
I think we, I think that's a good idea. So, okay, so let's, at the end, we'll recap.
Yeah.
At the end of the meeting, we'll recap our dates and what we've set up for going forward. So for now, to recap this section, any things that we have ideas when we look through the budget and when we think about, you know, the next year
Mm-hmm.
or two, we, we make sure we send information to Dina and don't copy each other, so that we don't violate anything.
Right.
Good, thank you. And now, we are so lucky, we have a talented, oh, wait, sorry, sorry.
Well, do you need any good notes?
Snowplow meetings?
Snowplow, sorry.
It should be brief, I just passed out a little summary, um, of the bids that were received.
Thank you.
Um, we launched an RFP, um, sorry. We launched on October third, they were due on October seventeenth at two o'clock. Jason was there along with myself and, uh, Casey Mayhew from CCR. We received a bid from CCR, Andrew's Property Maintenance, Menards, and, um, Dick's Construction. Um, you can see them all outlined there.
Is CCR who we currently use?
Yes.
Yeah.
CCR is the current, um, contractor, and the current contract amount, um, it was a three-year previously as well, and the last year of that contract was ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, um, plus, um, twenty-four hundred dollars for removal of snow when necessary. Um, so it was a total of, um, twelve eight fifty. Um, so the bids, um, this year are, are, um, once again competitive. Um, you'll see there's, Andrew's Property Ma- Maintenance came up quite a bit higher than the others, um, but I believe at this time, um, the recommendation from Jason is to move forward with CCR. He was happy with the work that they've done. Um, there have been a few small issues along the way, but they've been rectified, um.
Are they local?
Um, they had a shop in Swamp, and they have recently, um, they're not op- they're not selling equipment anymore, but they are operating their plowing business out of that, um, location, their main location is in Essex.
Oh, that's good.
So even with the cost savings with Menards, you've also took the CCR?
Um, well, Menards isn't, actually, the removal would be automatically billed, so they'd be at ten seven in order of thinking that.
Oh, got it.
He's erring on the fact that there hasn't been a lot of removal costs previously, so even if it comes out sort of close, he thinks that CCR has done a nice job in the past, and he would go with the company that he is more comfortable with.
Got it.
I just have one question. The removal though was twenty-four hundred, meaning there were twenty-four hours of removal.
Twenty-four, well, they only charged up to twenty-four hundred in the current contract, depending on how many hours of removal.
So are they?
So it was done a little bit differently. Here, they're quoting just a flat amount, a hundred dollars an hour. But Jason can manage that, when we talked about it, he has places he can, they can put snow, so I think he's learned a lot about that, and, um.
Yeah. He's learned a lot, yeah. He does, he does derive himself between him and their, to cut down on those costs, so.
No, I, I think Jason or somebody, I'll leave first back up. I, I think because of all the confusion around budgets this year, uh, that people will be very anxious. And we may get more scrutiny than we've ever gotten, although I think we usually get quite a bit of scrutiny.
Yeah.
It's, if you look at the two bids, the two low bids, it's, it's, it's pretty significant, maybe not in dollars, but in percentage. Because CCR is eleven thousand, if I'm reading it right, twenty-five hours, plus a hundred dollars an hour, and you said that was maximum of twenty-four hundred?
So it's no. Currently in this year, they put a cap of twenty, it was bid differently for the, in the three-year contract, and that's for the third year, this is a three-year bid as well.
Okay, so, so. So that could be, if it's be, that could be over fifteen thousand dollars, if it were easily, if you had, uh, thirty hours.
It could, but again, Jason feels pretty confident that it won't be in that kind of, um, excess. I don't know.
I'm just thinking of being at a public meeting, knowing that, I think some of these people are sworn in. Residents, families that are very involved in the community, and if we're asked in a public, I, I'm not gonna go and guess his recommendation right now to learn budget discussion, but it's just something to keep on a front burner.
In, in a couple of years past too, I mean, we've been happy with this. There are some previous years when we have come in and the lots have not been plowed, and that previously was a hardship for everyone here, for buses, for kids, so, um, I, I think Jason has done a good job in the communication with them, and the idea that they have really come through. It's hard to put a price tag on that, I, I understand that, but getting buses in here on those days, so that's, we, we've just been happy with that service, so I think that's, and because he can take care a lot of, of a lot of this himself, it wouldn't be extra, but.
Yeah, it's just part of the unknowns.
Yeah.
And he did share with me that I don't think he had a problem with any of these companies, I mean, I think he thought, even Dick's Construction, which is who they, you've had previously,
Right, right.
prior to this three-year contract, it was Dick's Construction, and if he shared something different with you, please let me know. Um, but he did say there were a few issues that arose at that time, but he feels comfortable, he would still feel comfortable with that company even, and Menards as well. The other one obviously is much higher, so that wouldn't make any sense.
Yeah, they've taken it so.
Um, but it, it, he did not, um, didn't, didn't seem like he would have an issue with any, it was just going with the one that he knew, um, continuing with the one that was the known.
And as a board member, I don't have an issue, I'm just thinking of an explanation, uh, if that is an issue. People will ask about snowplow that will not ask what you're gonna do with library books or computers, but they do know about snowplowing,
Yes, you're right.
because everybody has done it in one, uh, no, but, okay.
I think he's hoping that year one, it will be the lowest bid, even though they could, they can charge us a hundred dollars an hour for removal. I think he was fairly confident that at the ten four fifty in fifteenth year nineteen, it will be in fact the lowest bid. Um, but it, it is an unknown, it could snow, it could, I mean, it was snowing today.
Right.
So, you know.
Is there a reason, I think I heard you say the context, is there a reason they didn't continue with the same language and put it?
Yeah.
It's a brand-new RFP, I didn't ask, um, they can, we leave it, it's a bid form in there, they can bid any way that, the parameters as they wish. They all do it a little differently for sure.
They probably just changed their internal.
In some, some years you work out better, and some years you don't. I'm a firm believer that you still can negotiate these a little bit, even though you go out to bid, you're still allowed to negotiate.
Are you? And that's where I wonder if you're allowed to put a cap?
To some degree, I can't go back and change the rules, but I can negotiate.
And you can put a cap, perhaps?
See, that's what I was wondering, but I wasn't gonna bring it up tonight, but if, if we end up going with them to say, look, you're gonna, if you will put your cap that you had, it's not something we're imposing on you, it's something you, they had. And then it makes it look a little, I think a little better.
Although cap is a little high. Okay.
So, um, I think Jason was looking for the board to, um, authorize moving forward, and then I would need also authorization that once I draft the contract to have someone coming aside and chair typically.
Who will change that.
In that, um, before we get into that, in that proposal, could we propose that Laura, uh, negotiate a?
Not to exceed him out for the.
Not to exceed him out similar to the other caps? Not to last year's cap on him, but to a different bidder's cap? What, you know, the higher bidder cap? That would make it more, uh, competitive.
Like, like, I need you to say like this.
Instead of twenty-four hundred, have it be forty-one?
We, we don't know what we did this year, like, the cap was twenty-four hundred this past season, right, snow season?
I, I apologize, I didn't pull out what we ended up.
We don't know if we. Yeah, we don't know if we met that cap, but I'll wait.
Jason said the removal was minimal.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we met the cap, oh, okay.
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay, that makes sense then, okay. And Dina said that there's plenty of spots here that we're not really.
Now, are, are we bidding for three years, or we bidding this year? I was, I mean, are we?
Yeah.
Three, three, went out to bid for three years.
Three, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I believe that even if we do merge, the contract would still stay in place.
Absolutely.
Um.
One of you were interested in moving out to the other, because I think that's a good idea, you and us. Okay.
I did sort of do that this time, um, Sheldon was going out to bid along with our office, and I did talk with Paul, so I did encourage people to vote on, or, sorry, to vote, to, uh, bid on all of them, um, hoping, but it seems people like to stay in their area, or in areas where they already have business. Where they know they can do a good job, probably, so.
Well, what do we think?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion, just to, even if it's defeated, you can move it on. I, I'm gonna move that we ask Laura and Jason, uh, to meet with CCR and be empowered to, uh, accept their bid, if they will agree to removal at fourteen hundred dollars.
Max.
Max.
So a hundred dollars an hour like they've quoted, but with a cap of fourteen hundred.
And I'm using the fourteen hundred, because another bidder says they can do it for fourteen hundred.
Well, another says twelve.
One said twelve, yeah.
We would probably, it would be much more appropriate to go with a higher one.
Yeah, but, but he's got, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone second that?
I'll second.
John seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, so I'm only moving forward if that's the case.
That's what I would say.
Okay, so if it snows between now and, if we're going to, when's our next meeting?
Uh, is that the nineteenth? Yeah, that's.
Um, or can we also add some language to? Is, can I?
Are they the current, they're the current, uh?
Well, the, the contract ended at last snow season. So they were the current, but they're no longer contracted with us. Um.
Well, I, I think we're maybe thinking there's gonna be more trouble than there is, cause I bet you could get this done in a day or two.
I think I can too, I just don't wanna have it snow next weekend.
Yeah.
I need to go on.
Yeah, not have any one, so if, if I can, um, I guess I'll contact Dina, if, and Jason and I will talk to you, but I'm not sure.
So what happens if he says no to that, and what do we do?
We can wait till the next meeting.
I, I would agree with.
I wouldn't wait that long.
Today's Wednesday, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so let's say that he says no. Can we have a special meeting at Julie's office, and, uh, both of them?
Reevaluate the bids?
Mm-hmm.
I would feel more comfortable having some kind of backup plan, I'm happy to be in a little combination, but.
Well, I just think we can, we can want a special meeting for like next Monday, at the end of the day or whatever, or during the day.
I'll hear this. Yep.
The three board members and.
I would like Jason to be a part of that.
You like whom? I'm sorry.
Jason, I mean.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I know, right, that's, that's.
Okay, we're still in the discussion phase. Are any more discussion?
Hopefully these, that these programs don't get broadcast before.
Well, if we're okay, if we're on board with the possibility of a special meeting, then I think, I don't have anything else, okay.
No, that's.
So all in favor say aye?
Hello?
Aye. All opposed, nay? Anybody not vote?
What, 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 what was the, what was the motion? What was the motion? Can you read it to me?
Um, no, cause they're not writing it down, it's recorded.
No. Yeah, that's, that's good, I just wanna make sure I.
So, what I understood, it, the motion to date is authorizing Laura with Jason to accept CCR's plowing contract with the provision that the snow removal cap can be at fourteen hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars an hour, up to fourteen hundred dollars.
With your dollars.
Yeah.
Or if you want to make fifty dollars, I can do it for twenty-eight dollars, you don't pay.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, right? Yeah, okay, so that was the motion?
That's the motion.
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, you called it already, we're done with discussion, right?
Right.
So, um, I haven't voted yet, and I'm a, uh, I'm an aye.
Can we? Huh?
Yeah, can we just re?
Can we revoke?
Just revoke.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Just revoke.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, the motion passed, great. With the understanding that if it doesn't happen, we have a special meeting. Not leave you guys in the buff, or we show the plow truck for snow.
I was gonna say, or bring a shovel.
We have a snow blower, right?
Yeah, we do too.
Electric one.
Better start early.
Anything else?
No, sorry, that took so long.
No, thank you, we're the ones that asked you questions. Okay, uh, we have a very talented guest person next, right? I'm gonna have you.
Yes. So, we have Carol Zott here, who's the director of our early, no, of our after-school programs.
Can you see, go?
Yeah, I can see, I can see.
Carol's done this five times already, and she's well-practiced at this point. Um, Carol is the director of our after-school programs, uh, throughout Franklin Northwest. She is going to be, uh, it's time to, uh, reapply for the century, Twenty-First Century Grant Federal Grant that supports much of the programs, uh, and part of that process involves, uh, talking to boards about the program and hopefully getting a commitment to, um, continue to support, uh, the program. And she will take it away from here with much more specificity than I.
Okay, so Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union has eight after-school programs. Uh, five summer programs, and this past summer, we actually had two additional one-week programs that were funded by other grants. Um, if you go to the first slide, so, uh, the program started in, with, uh, the school year two thousand five, two thousand six. Um, there were some initial rewrites of the grant, and, um, I was actually hired in January two thousand six. Our first Crossroads program was in March two thousand six. Uh, Crossroads, the grant was written to target middle school students, looking at them as not having options in the community. Um, childcare is like over for them, and they're home alone type stuff, and was a way to prevent child abuse, um, substance abuse, and, um, support them with homework and getting them to graduate. So, that was the initial goals of the first grant. Uh, in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we were approached by the Sheldon Aspen Program, which was also a Twenty-First Century, uh, Community Learning Center's program grant. Um, they had gotten the, um, grant approved through their town select board, uh, in two thousand four, two thousand five. And, um, the first three years are a hundred percent funded, and then when they came to the end of that, there was, there was having difficulties. So we ended up, um, they approached Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union to take over the administration of that program. So the Sheldon program became absorbed into, uh, the Crossroads, um, program under FNWSU. Uh, in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, um, there was interest, and we applied for a high school grant and also for the Explorers program with grades two through four. That was awarded, and in two thousand nine, uh, we were asked to consolidate all the grants. So we did another application with the consolidation, and then in two thousand fourteen, that grant ended, cause it's a five-year grant. And we are in the current one from two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen, and this is the fifth year of our program, it's going very well. Um, we have, I think we have the respect of the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers community, there's a hundred twenty programs. And we have been around and have had, uh, a stable, uh, administration of the program, which is one of the things that we report annually on, so, so looking at the numbers, um, we have reached nine hundred and five at this point. So, um, I have something that I'm gonna show you that shows the. Oh, there it is. Okay, so this is a sampling of, um, at the end of every year, I do, uh, an end of year, and I show the, the last session of the school year, the spring session or the mud season session. I'm showing, uh, a sampling of each of the school programs, uh, what their classes look like, what the daily count is. And at the bottom, you'll see the percentages of what's the proportion that, um, of the targeted grades are attending the after-school program. Swanton alphabetically is on the back, and you'll see that for the Swanton Crossroads and the Swanton Crossroads Explorers, uh, we have sixty-four percent of the student body of Swanton participating in the programs. And of that, um, ninety-six students are, well, let's see, I'll give you the number, so the number of attendees. School population, um, so the number of students registers was two hundred and nineteen. Um, of that two hundred and nineteen, almost half are regular attendees. So regular attendee is a student that attends, uh, thirty days or sixty hours or more in the after-school program. And the research has shown that those are the students that we have the greatest impact on, that you can expect to see changes in behavior or improvement, um, with your regular attendees. So that is what we report on. Um, if you go to the next slide. Um, so anyway, uh, nine hundred and five participated in the whole SU and thirty-four, fifty-seven percent of the SU are participating in the after-school programs or summer programs. So, so looking at the budget here, um, the program is an eight hundred thousand dollar program. Half of that, more than half of that is being paid for by a Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers program. Uh, if you look down at five o'clock there, at the perp, the light purple, the eighty-eight thousand, that is the agent, the Vermont Agency of Education's Child Nutrition Programs. Okay, that's part of our program expense, but that's paid for by the Child Nutrition Programs. We're getting a match, a twenty-one C match to that eighty-eight thousand. If you look at three o'clock, that's the, um, the CFG school-wide funds. That's for the Teen Northwest tutoring. That seventy-one thousand is also matched by another seventy-one thousand in the Twenty-First Century grant. These are, those on the right are considered what they say, local funds. So the grant has a requirement that it'll pay fifty percent and then, uh, local funds will pay the rest in partnerships that you may have in that. So you can see that, uh, the school budget allocation is really, a really small piece and we're leveraging a lot of funding here by that piece.
Is it matching for only so many years or?
It's a five-year grant.
So what happens after the?
It's fifty percent funded. We're, right now, because we're returning, we're fifty percent funded for five years. And then, five years from now, it, it potentially could be there still and it would be fifty percent funded. We are in that stage. Also, um, with the reapplication, it's fifty percent funded for returning, but new expansion is a hundred percent funded for three years. And then it goes to seventy-five the fourth year and sixty-five the fifth year. Uh, one of the requi, one of the guidelines of the Twenty-First Century program, they want you to have a thirty-two week program during the school year and a five-day-a-week program, all right? So we have been able to stay with our four-day-a-week program because we were initially, were funded to have a fifth, uh, Friday, but we found that the kids didn't come or the staff didn't wanna be there. So it was very difficult with Friday programming. So over the years, we've, we've got it that we were just doing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So, um, with this, there, I was advised that we should try to meet those requirements or their guidelines. So what we're doing is, what I had, I've made initial steps, inquiries. I've approached the libraries, the rec department, um, different, uh, the bookmobile, the Franklin Carrion Communities and we're looking to have the libraries, 'cause one of the, um, one of the allowable uses of funds of this grant is to expand library hours. Also counseling programs, prevention programs, um, STEM programs, uh, uh, flexible pathway programs. So the libraries, I'm approaching them and saying, will you be open? Could you be open between three and six? And it's a hundred percent funded. So they're all excited about this. They're, you know, so the school day bus would just have the library as a, a ju, a drop-off point. And so children can go there, the library, they take care of this program. They just report attendance to me by end-of-year reporting. Right, and they'll do, they could do summer vacation programming. That would give me another week, 'cause right now we are thirty weeks of after-school, the, the, the school year. So they can add, maybe, maybe the rec department wants to do a June, a June after-school program for a week. It's new expansion, so, and it's in our grant and it's a hundred percent funded. Yes, we got, I've got, all the libraries are super excited about this, because they want to expand their hours. So anyways.
Is this grant, Carol, is this grant starting July one, two thousand nineteen or two thousand eighteen?
July two thousand nineteen. Yeah, so anyway, that was, that was just an aside, um, because we're pretty excited about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there's more program partners and with that, we've got a shared mission. You have community support, um, you also get, you're reaching more people, um, more families and, um, the grant wants to see community partnerships. This is a one-pager that I have that has that pie chart, but it also has our goals and our mission. And on the right, it shows, um, some of the many partners we have had. Uh, also, after-school, um, we have the Vermont After-School Inc., which is a training for all Vermont after-school programs and they help with publicity and they actually lobby. Um, they, they recently had passed, um, they had created a fund at the state level for, uh, to support the after-school programs and, um, but it wasn't funded. And this year, they just put in, uh, several million into that bucket. So, and that will be distributed to, uh, programs in Vermont, so you can help fund, to fund our programs.
Right, can I ask a question about that?
So.
So you mean that will add to this pool, so we get matching from the Twenty-First Century?
It'll be coming in as a grant.
So maybe we can get matching, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to see the difference between what the state is doing and what we're already doing.
The state's not on there, 'cause this is a brand-new thing. I was just notified two weeks ago.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, this is, um, gives you some of the research data on why having after-school programs. Uh, also, I have our flyers, our fall flyers here, so you can, uh, look at some of those if you're interested. This is the Explorers program and the, um, Crossroads program. So Explorers is our second and third graders and the Crossroads is fourth, fifth, and sixth. Um, so, next slide.
Next slide.
Okay, so Ian Ullie, read, report on, um, linkages to the school day, high-quality staff, regular attendees, flexible structures and student choice, community partnerships, safe and appropriate environment, high-interest programming, instructional leadership, school leadership support, program leadership. These are things that through research, they have come, that these are the elements for our high-quality program. Um, and we report to the Agency of Education's Twenty-First Century Office and we have, uh, federal data that we input, uh, to the online system for our Twenty-First Century programs. Okay, so. End this and, yeah, I guess we could do, um, I did a, I created a, um, video sort of slideshow, but it's, um, for our tenth anniversary, because this is year thirteen for the Crossroads program. So for our tenth anniversary, I created a, uh, a sort of a slideshow video, um, to go through the years. Uh, I'll tell you, going through these, it's like looking at all these baby pictures of these kids, 'cause you see them growing through years, like the Wonder Bread commercial from years ago. Oh, there is sound. I can hear it a little bit.
Yep, I will increase it. I don't like it in BU last night when it startled the heck out of us. See how it goes. You ready for me to hit it?
Mm-hmm.
Nice, that's sweet.
So we got a wide breadth of activities to do after school. Uh, we're gonna have a celebration. Um, October is, uh, Lights On After School. Um, so all the sites have some celebration, open house type thing going on, so there's that. And this is an invitation specifically to the Swanton, uh, program, um, Lights On program, which is this Thursday.
Oh, wow, tomorrow.
Yeah. Sorry to know what the week is, but.
That is cute.
Um, also, one other thing I wanted to share with you, uh, was asked last night. I thought, oh, maybe I'll do that. So what I have is, um, as I said, we report on our goals and the goals. Um, we have, uh, improved school day performance, improved school day attendance. And, uh, we actually report on attendance and, um, SBAQ scores to, um, uh, both the federal and the state government. And this is the, um, worksheet on the goals for Swanton's, uh, for the attendance and, um, SBAQ scores. So you can, you can look at that. Um, the, these are put in by grade level, so the second grade is first on here and you'll see it's pretty empty, 'cause there's no SBAQ information. Uh, also, uh, uh, we had something go awry with getting the second graders' first grade attendance for comparison. But if you look on page two and three, you'll see there's more data there. Um, and the summary at the very end, I highlighted the ones that show, um, that we, um, met or exceeded what our goals were. Uh, our goals are for regular attendees to have a twenty-five percent increase in their SBAQ scores from last year to this, the current year. Um, and, uh, we did meet that. Um, if you look at improved or maintained at three or four for a score in their SBAQs. For the reading, it was forty-four percent met that and for math, thirty-seven percent met that. So, you can see that there is some, uh.
So we've been asking boards if they were, uh, if they would make a motion to, um, continue to support and, uh, have, uh, after-school programs in Swanton.
Is your dollar not passed to them?
No, there is not. It's really about the, um, the, the support for the programming.
Because we do support it financially, right?
You do.
In the budget draft I gave you on page one, Don, you'll see about half.
and we are doing a book study, because the goal is to get better at coaching. Uh we have seen more and more of this movement everywhere, especially here in Vermont, of using coaches to really support teachers in the classroom, help them with goals that they've set professionally for themselves, uh which is part of our supervision and evaluation model. So every teacher creates a professional goal and then how can coaches really work with them to help them get to where they want to go.
That's great, yeah.
It's really great work. Ri- this year, we are reading a book called Better Conversations and it's really about how do you use conversation to build those relationships? Because it requires a lot of trust for someone to say, you know, this is what I need to be working on and how can we work together? So it's great work going on. Uh as far as professional development, um our coaches, once again, are stepping up to the plate and this year, we are rolling out a new supervision and evaluation model, which is also connected to the Marzano framework that we've been working on. So the administrators had a three-day training in the summer. Uh we decided as an SU to start with our new teachers this year, because they have to be evaluated twice. And so they're going to pilot it with the new teachers. But we didn't want people just to feel that, oh, there's this new supervision and evaluation system and we don't know about it. So all the coaches are working in partnerships and we are presenting some after-school workshops to support teachers. So the first one is coming up on Monday and um Julie Curtis and Sarah Gates from MBU are hosting the first one. We have already about twenty-five teachers signed up. And the whole first um workshop is gonna be the planning stage of your unit. So um how you can uh plan your unit and then what are the protocols that administrators will be using to evaluate you on the planning part of your instruction. We have these workshops uh already scheduled for the year, so teachers know what's coming up. And they can choose to come for one, they can choose to go for all of them, it's up to them uh in terms of what they want uh support in. Um we also have the coaches going to a Jim Knight training. Jim Knight has become pretty well-known all over the country for the work he's doing on coaching and how to help coaches become better at what they do. Um we are lucky that most of our coaches went to his training uh through C-WED last year and really learnt about the coaching cycle. Uh and this year, he's coming back in November to really talk about professional development and how you can make your presentations really engaging. So we have nine of our coaches going for that. Um we also ha- I know that Joan and Deb presented to you the Sback data and you saw the progress that's going on. Uh we still have some work to be doing in math. And so all our math coaches have done a really good job this year of getting teachers to go for these different professional development uh opportunities. So we had eighteen teachers go for the O-GAP additive reasoning course uh from all over the SU. Um Joan here in in Swanton has hosted the uh differentiation through math menu. And currently, you have most of the grades three through six teachers in Swanton going through that course. And they're really learning, how do you meet the needs of all your students? Because as you know, in each classroom, we see such a variance in terms of abilities. And so how do you really plan your instruction to meet the needs of all those students? Uh the, we've uh had a few teachers from Sheldon join with the Swanton teachers and Highgate already had their whole staff go through the training. Uh Joan also would like to have a second training, starting in springtime, for the teachers who did not go for the first session. So uh Deena and Joan and and I are in the process of setting that up. And that would be really focusing on your kindergarten through second grade teachers to see as as many as we can get uh onboard. Um there's another math training happening on November nineteenth, that's being hosted by Franklin. It's called Number Talks and it's uh how do you get kids to do these short mental exercises and be able to explain their math thinking? Um all our other coaches from uh the other schools are going to be attending it and see what they can learn from it and come back and share it with their staff. Um I put in Math Studio, even though it's happening at MBU, because the elementary schools have already had it in the past and so we're continuing with that training. Um Heidi Mosher also hosted a webinar on the Equals program. This is a program that our special ed department has bought this year and it's specifically catering to our students with intensive needs. So our our special educators have had training in this Equals program and uh they are starting to pilot it this year with those students. So there's a lot of math training going on. Um as far as social emotional learning, um here in Swanton, um Joelle Van Landt is continuing with the trauma-based work and uh she's already done a training, a couple of trainings this year and she's from coming back in January, so that work is continuing. Um we also had us uh the middle school from Swanton, Sheldon, and MBU um do the developmental designs, uh which is the responsive classroom but for middle school. So they've had that training in June and we are hoping to have the second tier of in of uh training this year. The other things is, as I was talking to Deena about, is ten years ago, when she was our curriculum director, we had bought the Founder's Panel Benchmark Assessment Kits and have been using them for ten years now. And there is now a third edition out, so we wanna upgrade. We are trying to convert those kits uh into the newer ones, which are really uh kind of based on the Common Core standards. So the rigor has gone up, the amount of comprehension or the comprehension skills that we are requiring of students has changed a little bit. So we're in the process of coming up with how do we fund this and how do we upgrade to that? But it's going to be really uh a good um change, because um the other assessment we've been using in grades three up has been the independent reading assessment and that also has that big rigor that we want. So uh the goal is to be, to have that the alignment between what we are seeing on Sback with our local assessments. So we're in the process of upgrading those uh.
Is that in the bylaws? First cross, are they in the bylaws?
We're looking at some professional development in those materials with grant funds if we could, but if not, we'll look at that. And that's something that we may have available even this year, if we need to do it, so.
So the Fontis and Penelope, like, is it gonna be adding to it or just total new upgrade?
I think it's um upgrading some books, from what Debbie said.
Yeah, they've got a conversion kit right now, which is pretty reasonable. It's uh just a hundred dollars per kit, which is really reasonable. So we are hoping to be able to buy those conversion kits and uh there are some books that have been changed and then the questions and the scale, the rubrics have been changed, they have now become proficiency-based. So they've they've really upgraded. So we are looking into how we can, at a minimal cost, be able to convert those kits.
Instead of just purchasing new kits.
Yeah, the new kits cost four hundred and twenty-five, so if we can convert it for a hundred, what they said is that it would require some input by the coaches. So we would have to look at the old kit, look at the conversion and see what's changed and make those changes. And we would definitely do some professional development around it, so that teachers know what is different. But Deb has already dug deep into it and she's very excited. Oh yeah, she is too. Yeah, she is really excited, because it really matches the kind of questions that students are being asked on the Sback, as well as uh in the independent reading assessment, so.
That's great.
Yeah. And then the last thing I just wanted to update you on is all the upcoming spring assessments. Um as you all know, grades three through nine uh have the Sback in science and uh sorry, I should say literacy and math. Um and then there's the Vermont PE assessment for grades four, seven, and nine. We have two teacher leaders that have volunteered, who will be going for the training at the state level and then they'll be coming back and training the rest of our PE teachers on how to do their assessment.
It's like the presidential fitness exam.
And then we have the science assessment, which is in grades five, eight, and eleven. And uh that's also happening in spring. And the state has also decided to add a new assessment, which is called VT Climate. It's a climate survey, which is going to be assessing engagement, safety, and environment. And that's gonna be in grades five, six, seven, and ten. Um this is a new assessment where they want to be able to see what students perceive as um in their own school and really get some qualitative data on that and what it looks like.
That's good.
Yeah, that is good.
Yeah. And we are scheduled for the NAEP test in February for grade four. That's.
Which test?
NAEP. Yeah, that happens every, every, yeah.
Yeah, it's a national assessment and we don't get individual student data on it. It's for assessing your state and how your state is doing as a whole. So that's the.
Are these all given, like, within all it's, one's turn or not?
It is gonna be very busy in spring. Spring is, spring is really hard.
Yeah, yeah, um that's helpful to know all this, thank you.
And how how long is it? So it's all at once?
In a couple of weeks.
They have like some with those which are starting in March and then some are May and June. So uh the principals all look at the, will work with the coaches and really look at how do we make it manageable for teachers? Because we don't want to totally stop instruction just to do testing and also make sure that students don't have fun time on.
Yeah, especially third graders.
Right.
Okay, and with the way we structure most of it, and keep in mind, we have also our local assessments, our FMP testing. So we ha- we have our schedule already. So Sback, um last year, we tried to do it in a two-week time period. So every morning over here is test, test mold. Babcock School continues on as they are, but over here for those two weeks, Sback every morning. Um we wait, the PE assessment is kind of given throughout the month of May during PE time, which is sometimes canceled because of Sback, so finding those blocks to test is is goo- and interesting. Um we try to give the science to our grade five students after Sback. Last year, we did Sback for two weeks and then the next week, we took two days for science. So and we have to figure out how we're gonna fit the climate survey, yeah. But it's, it's interesting. And then, you know, FMP and end of the year things. So when when Koshia talks about not stopping instruction, that's, it's really hard. And I mean, our teachers, the kids are practicing all through the year. The amount of comprehension or the comprehension skills that we are requiring of students has changed a little bit. So we're in the process of coming up with how do we fund this and how do we upgrade to that? But it's going to be really uh a good um change. Because um the other assessment we've been using in grades three up has been the independent reading assessment. And that also has that big rigor that we want. So uh the goal is to be to have that the alignment between what we are seeing on Sback with our local assessments.
Yeah.
So we're in the process of upgrading those uh.
Is that in the budget? First class, is it in the budget?
We're looking at some professional development in those materials with grant funds if we could, but if not, we'll look at that. And that's something that we may have available even this year if we need to do it, so.
So the Fontis and Penal, like, is it gonna be adding to it or just total new upgrade?
I think it's um upgrading some books from what Debbie said.
Yeah, yeah, they've got a conversion kit right now, which is pretty reasonable. It's uh just a hundred dollars per kit, which is really reasonable. So we are hoping to be able to buy those conversion kits and uh there are some books that have been changed. And then the questions and the scale, the rubrics have been changed, they have now become proficiency-based. So they've they've really upgraded. So we are looking into how we can, at a minimal cost, be able to convert those kits.
Instead of just purchasing new kits.
Yeah, the new kits cost four hundred and twenty-five, so if we can convert it for a hundred. What they said is that it would require some input by the coaches. So we would have to look at the old kit, look at the conversion and see what's changed and make those changes. And we would definitely do some professional development around it, so that teachers know what is different. But Deb has already dug deep into it and she's very excited. Oh yeah, she is too. Yeah, she is really excited because it really matches the kind of questions that students are being asked on the Sback. As well as uh in the independent reading assessment, so yeah. And then the last thing I just wanted to update you on is all the upcoming spring assessments. Um as you all know, grades three through nine uh have the Sback in science and uh sorry, I should say literacy and math. Um and then there's the Vermont PE assessment for grades four, seven and nine. We have two teacher leaders that have volunteered, who will be going for the training at the state level. And then they'll be coming back and training the rest of our PE teachers on how to do their assessment.
It's like the presidential fitness exam.
And then we have the science assessment, which is in grades five, eight and eleven. And uh that's also happening in spring. And the state has also decided to add a new assessment, which is called VT Climate. It's a climate survey, which is going to be assessing engagement, safety and environment. And that's gonna be in grades five, six, seven and ten. Um this is a new assessment where they want to be able to see what students perceive
Mm-hmm.
as um in their own school and really get some qualitative data on that and what it looks like. So they feel that they don't want to judge schools just by Sback scores, but they want to be able to evaluate these other things that are meaningful to them.
That's good.
Yeah, that is good.
Yeah.
And we are scheduled for the NAEP test in February for grade four. That's.
Which test?
NAEP. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that happens every, every, yeah. So it's a national assessment and we don't get individual student data on it, it's for assessing your state and how your state is doing as a whole. So that's the uh.
Are these all given like within all it's, one's turn or no?
It's a very, mm, oh yeah, it's, yeah.
So.
It is gonna be very busy in spring. Spring is, spring is really hard.
Yeah, yeah, um that's helpful to know all this, thank you.
And how how long is it? So it's all at once?
In a couple of weeks.
They have like some with those which are starting in March and then some are May and June. So uh the principals all look at the, will work with the coaches and really look at how do we make it manageable? But teachers, because we don't want to totally stop instruction just to do testing. And also make sure that students don't have time on, on, especially third graders. Right.
Okay, and with the way we structure most of it, and keep in mind, we have also our local assessments, our FMP testing. So we ha- we have our schedule already. So Sback, um last year we tried to do it in a two-week time period, so every morning over here is test, test mode. Babcock School continues on as they are, but over here for those two weeks, Sback every morning. Um we wait, the PE assessment is kind of given throughout the month of May during PE time, which is sometimes canceled because of Sback. So finding those blocks to test is is good and interesting. Um we try to give the science to our grade five students after Sback. Last year we did Sback for two weeks and then the next week we took two days for science. So and we have to figure out how we're gonna fit the climate survey, yeah. But it's, it's interesting. And then, you know, FMP and end of the year things. So when when Koshia talks about not stopping instruction, that's, it's really hard. And I mean, our teachers, the kids are practicing all through the year with the Sback block assessment, so they're getting used to the tool, the kind of questions. Teachers are teaching with that level of rigor. But it's just, um when you're testing, it's 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 hard. And kids work really hard in the morning, so sometimes they're tired in the afternoon. Um but we, you know, we try to balance that as best we can. I and I just need to compliment Koshia, her, when we were knowing that we were having a transition in this position, knowing that she was coming in this leadership position, made us feel really good as a school. Her leadership, her direction, her vision, her knowledge and her relationships with her, especially her coaches and things. I mean, it's just, it's wonderful having you here. And I mean, when I listen to it, it's like, yep, yep, we're, and we're, I mean, that's just not on paper. We are actually doing all those things, but they're all integrated. I don't believe, our teachers are really busy, but I don't believe that they feel like it's one more thing on the plate. Everything we're doing is helping us to get better at what we're already doing. So I as a as a colleague, we really appreciate that collaboration, so we're happy to have you.
Yeah, and I I'm really, really excited to be able to support teachers in what they're doing. Uh and like even when I meet them in my monthly meetings, you see, you know, like the people who signed up for the science committee, they're really excited about science and the social studies, they're really excited about it. So it's wonderful to see that kind of enthusiasm.
Mm-hmm.
And I think our teachers do an amazing job. Uh I've had relationships with a lot of them, but I'm also getting to know some new ones. And it's just, it's just amazes me how much they're, just their dedication and the kind of commitment they have to their students. And I also wanna take the opportunity to thank all of you because um all our school boards are so supportive. And I don't think that the work can go forward without your support, so we appreciate it.
Don, that's awesome.
I would just like to go back to our earlier discussion. We were talking about, uh, I guess you'd say updating uh the these assessment kits.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's really important that when we look at that, that we don't let money get in the way of doing it right. Uh I think I heard you said, well, they, you know, they can take the old, you take the new and you can like, okay. If if that's the way that you as a professor think we can do it. But you know, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, you just saw us tonight on stuff. And and to me, this is one of the most critical things that we do. And so if in the discussions, you need a few thousand dollars more, then I think it's our responsibility with Julie and Dina to find the money.
Thank you.
I wouldn't want us to, I wouldn't want you sitting there thinking, ooh, if we had three thousand dollars more, we could do this, or we have five thousand, not wanna do it. I I would, I would expect you as a board member to come into the administration and say, we really need to do this right, it's gonna cost money. And then it's our responsibility to find it.
I agree with you, Don, 'cause I thought, when you were talking about that, I thought, oh, I can just see it now. These teachers have to take and replace and take and check and make sure. If it comes down to that, that's gonna take up so much of your time, when you're already spending so much time. I'd hate to see people spending time.
Some lessons you never forget, forty years ago I was a curriculum director, and the dollar cheap doesn't pay in many ways.
Especially when it's your labor that goes in.
That's nice, yeah.
I guess it's fifty years.
Yeah, well, we really appreciate your support and uh if we find that it's too tedious, we will definitely afford you another few ones. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much appreciate the update you're coming in.
PC, big marble. And now we are on to the principals' report, our illustrious principal.
You you folks have this, so just a couple of things. Always bringing, our numbers haven't really changed a lot, one number difference in our last four meetings. Just a little bit of spotlight on the data. We had the percentages from open house for fall, um seventy-six point four percent. So we had approximately three hundred and ninety-seven out of five hundred and nineteen. That was grades K through six. So those are, those are pretty good numbers. Each teacher keeps track of the people who were there. Couple of big things for our students right now, we just did our first taping with Channel Fifteen. We have um four little snippets um that we're gonna share with with people through probably after December, after the holiday season. Justina did a a really nice one with Jason on the playground. And instead of waiting for that one, she looks really good. Instead of waiting for that one, I might start publishing that on Facebook and just get that out there. Um also, just a, as of today, we've had two days of extension Thursday, um grade six and grade five. Tomorrow's grade four. And just a shout out to some of our partnerships. Reg Bellevue for years and years and years did the fire safety through October. His schedule got really busy, so that was hard, like we had a whole week and he'd come in. Right now, he's working with Liza Kaminsky from Highgate and now Swanton Rec. And they're coming in for this first fall session of Extension Thursday, so they're doing an hour-long rotation with each grade level. So that's the way he's coming in to do the fire safety, which is Reg's passion. So that's that's working out really well. Um a couple of other partners, Amy Brewer, Brenda Gagne, um from our Circle of Courage has been with us. Rachel Huff, Farm to School, Betsy Funnier, our big Rise VT person, has been wonderful. Um American Red Cross is coming in again this year to do something called the Pillow Case Project with grade three. And that's another safety um thing in in preparedness, safety preparedness. Um Sarah Nielsen's coming in to do some activities around bones and muscles. Eugene Rich from our Abnapi, Abnapi group, so we're getting some of that cultural storytelling and things. So those are just, that's who we've had in so far, but that's huge. That is so huge that our our community partners come in to do this and the kids love it, so that's great. Um I'm gonna put you on the spot, do you mind talking about our merit award? I'm really proud, our our PBIS program has really, really grown. And that growth has to do with Justina and her leadership, so I'd love for you to talk about that and your goal for next steps.
Oh, yes, um so I'm not really sure, this is my fourth year here, went exactly Swanton, became a PBIS school. But um two years ago, three years ago, we did go to, through like a revitalization and and kind of a growth process with that. Dina was new to the position, I was new to the school. Um our our primary PBIS coordinator had departed and we really were faced with unpacking the program and what it meant. And relearning it, I guess, as administrators and figuring out how to make this work in a different way for our school, which which we've done. Um we have two groups that are really PBIS related. We have a behavior support team, which meets once a week and we review behavior data within the school. And that really focuses on kind of tier two and tier three needs, some more student-specific. Um and we also have a universal PBIS team, which is made up of volunteers. Teachers and support staff in the building that volunteer to stay late one day a month, plus some other tasks, you know, in between as they need to get done. Um but they're really dedicated to PBIS. Um and that is our PBIS universal team, which talks about our implementation school-wide for all students. So that's not student-specific. That's how are we teaching expectations, reinforcing expectations um throughout our building. As part of that, we have taken part in a couple of different assessments as part of PBIS, the TFI, which is a tiered fidelity inventory. And the self-assessment survey. Um and coupled with that, using our data to make and drive our decision-making process at school in regards to behavior. So as part of that, we were recognized as a merit school for two thousand and eighteen. To be fair, there are a lot of other schools that get that. But having not received it for so many years, it did feel good to be doing what we're supposed to be doing and be recognized for it. I did go to the leadership conference with Sandy Simmons, our new guidance counselor, she joined me. And um realized that there is a one step above that, the exemplar award, which one of our grade schools received, Sheldon School. And I looked at Kristy Martin, the principal, who was sitting beside me, and I said, oh, your ribbon is bigger than ours. So next year, we will be working on our exemplar status. And part of that is sustained over um three or more years too. So we really weren't eligible for that, but um it's a good, it's our goal now. So the school's done, it's a lot of work and it's good work. And like we, Dina and I really attribute that to a lot of our um improvements in in behavior. It's just part of our MTSS system for um behavior.
But thank you for doing that. That's awesome. Um talking about playground, we, um one of our teachers um thought of this incentive um to ask staff if they would be willing to pay to wear jeans on Tuesday to support our playground project. And a lot of people did. So it, I I thought it was a lovely idea, people really like wearing jeans and our professional staff, um not necessarily in the contract, but that's not part of our everyday work attire. So um to to do that, they had to pay twenty-five dollars to wear jeans on Tuesday, we added that to the donation bulletin board. Um I thought it was a really good morale booster for staff to get involved. And the fact that it didn't come from us, it came from one of our teachers, we thought was was exciting. So it's just those little things, one, makes people feel good, and two, the idea that we're raising money for a common cause. Many people paid the money to wear jeans who had already donated, but it was like an added bonus, so so it was, it was great. Just wanna focus on two other little quick things. We talked about Joelle Van Lent coming to do our um trauma-informed schools and our resiliency work. She can't be here every step of the way, so she comes in and does some big major three-and-a-half-hour presentations. But we have a resiliency team and that work was led by them at our last in-service. And that's just Cindy Newitt, Penny Hakey, Sandy Simmons, Sue Biladu, Ashley Gumlogian Sweet and myself. That's like the core group that did, will will carry out this work when Joelle's not here. So we're, we're, she's really building capacity for us to continue that, so that's just a big shout out. The last thing with the teachers, Koshia mentioned, there's a lot of stuff in here, Koshia mentioned the math menu work. Joan Lumber has worked incredibly hard. As Koshia said, most of our grades three through six teachers have been trained, we're working on another cohort. The teachers who have been trained love this because, as you know, our math program is very rigorous, which is good. But it's, our teachers are feeling that it's um a struggle at times to differentiate and to fill some of those gaps. So within this system, this framework of instruction, the math menu is allowing them to do it. I have not, I mean, people set their goals in alignment with math menu this year, which was exciting. Um the I, people are like really, really excited about it. And that, I don't wanna say it takes a lot, but like sometimes there's new things that come out, but their management, their planning, their organizing. Uh many of our grade level teams, I don't wanna pick on just one, but they're they're planning together. So when you talked about continuity and consistency, that is there. So Joan is working really hard, I think it would be her goal that we would be using this structure across grades K through six. So kudos to her, kudos to the classroom teachers who have jumped on board and are working to implement it. Uh goal-setting, Justina and I um worked really hard. I think we're very close to finishing, a lot of goal-setting conferences. I think our professional staff, about sixty-eight that we've done. Um we are transitioning with our new tool, we are using our new tool on eight first and second-year teachers. And our paraprofessional goals were due by October fifteenth. That's a big shout out to our classroom teachers and special educators because they lead those goal-setting conferences with the paras. Then they get to Justina and I. That's a lot of work for people in this building to do on a really short time, but we value that. Some of the best time is sitting down and talking to teachers one-on-one about their instruction and then getting into their classrooms to actually see it. So that is, that's a really important part. Jason gave us a brief update on facilities. Things slowed down a little bit for that staff who worked incredibly hard all summer. Eric was funny, I thought it was great. Um two days ago, I noticed that the shovel and the salt was already out in the doorways and like, oh. But they're like being prepared, so I didn't have to ask for it, but it's like, wow, you guys are on the ball, so. So that, things are moving along, they really are, there are lots of exciting things. Channel Fifteen will be here tomorrow for the lights on after school to focus on that. Also, our community dinner, November eighth. Everyone is invited to to be a part of that, Kathy Nibone, through her Crossroads Program. And we will also be having a Veterans Day Assembly on November ninth. That's a a nice tradition that that we've been able to do. In-service is coming up um on the morning of November nineteenth and then our parent conferences. Last thing, we were really excited, I can't remember the name of it, parent conference signup. Do you remember what it's called, Megan? Picoton.
I haven't done it yet.
Okay, that's all right, don't, it's easy. It was so, not that it was a a hard thing, parents usually some signed up when they came into parent, uh to open house. But this year it was far away, open house was early and then with conferences being a little later. And you know, we would get lots of phone calls, people would forget, so we really wanted to try to do something different. And a lot of schools have gone to an electronic signup. So Chrissy Longway and Rusty Gregory put this together. Rusty was great, step by step, so I think it will be. Um our our office staff is helping any parents who might not have available technology, some of our teachers are working. So I just, I thought that was really exciting.
Well, it's great too, 'cause like the the hard part was, we'd sign up at the open house, but where am I, where am I going to write down what I just signed up for? And I I was the one, I was like, I have no idea, did I sign up? I think I did, so.
Right, and that's hard, so we're hoping it feels good for families to be able to do that. So it's, yeah, it's a lot going on, but we're very excited, if you can't tell. Had a good soccer season too, Coach told me. New AED is doing great, Josh LaRush is doing a really nice job organizing and it's good. It's all, it's good.
That's awesome. It does seem exciting, like people seem happy when you're coming here, it's nice.
They sure do.
It's, you know, often you can just get worn down by some of the issues you have to deal with, but it seems to be more.
People are pretty resilient, I think, I think it is. Good collaboration, good support.
Awesome. Thank you. So how we move on to our superintendent report?
Well, I have the newsletter, this is later in the month, I think most people had seen it. Um and uh Koshia gave a great curriculum update. I have some things I wanna highlight that are outside of the newsletter, so if it's all right with you, I'm gonna do that. One of the things, well, I do have on there the Water Shant Graham update, there isn't one because the state of Vermont, this will shock everyone, but the state of Vermont has delayed a bit in signing a contract with the Regional Planning Council for these, not for the grant money, that's all secured, for the projects to begin and things like that. So we were told in Sept- in in July that it would be September and in September, it would be the end of September, the beginning of October. I called about two weeks ago, because Highgate and Swanton are both involved in this process. And she said, I'm so glad you called, I'm, I just am signing things with the state. How do we organize, you know, so we're we're in the beginning stages of getting it scheduled, but um they're they're having a hard time to kick off. I think there's a number of players that need to be involved and that's part of it. So when we do have that initial kickoff meeting, um we'll have more to report. So that, that's pretty, pretty quick. Um the, when you saw me last, I was getting authorization from you to go to the VI, the Vermont Education Health Initiative, meeting. I did that last Friday morning. Um also, I went to the school board insurance trust meeting, I didn't vote 'cause I didn't, I didn't have those proxies. Um but there were, there were no issues to vote on really, except people were getting voted into, met on onto the board. Um but really, it was good to hear just brief updates on um the Act Eleven. Uh at, for those that don't know, Act Eleven uh changed how health insurance will be negotiated in the state of Vermont for teachers. Um and the process that that would take. Um that's going to be happening at the state level between um school board members and Vermont NEA members. And uh that process will be finished uh with a hard stop by December two thousand and nineteen. Um they've, they, in case they need arbitration, they even have that locked in for that time, so that it would be January twenty twenty. so that it would be January twenty-twenty, that, um, the, the health insurance would shift. And they're not negotiating the plans, they'd be negotiating the, um, the shares between employers and employees, things like that. Whether it is health reimbursement plans or health savings accounts, so those kinds of things. So it was interesting, and somebody from the Department of Financial Regulation, who, who can regulate insurance companies, spoke about rate setting and how, how they actually come up. 'Cause one of the things Laura shared that's reflected in the proposed budget, uh, is, uh, an anticipated eleven-point-eight percent increase in the premium cost for, uh, the gold CDHP plans, which most folks have. Um, and so they did talk about how the insurance carriers and the, um, VIH and the regulators work together to make sure that those rates are appropriate.
So they talked about the same plans they have now?
Yes. The insurance, my, it was learning. I mean, I, I, I know more than the average person about these things, but I'm certainly not an insurance expert. But the plans themselves will not change. The plans offered by VIH will remain the same. But how much the employer pays, how much the employee pays, those kinds of things are what are negotiated, and they'll be negotiated centrally and imposed upon us all. And actually, that's one of those things that many folks don't feel so bad about having that imposed, because it is one of those equity pieces, and it really helps, um, I think it helps at the, the local bargaining table if you don't have to worry about the shares. But there is a lot, um.
Be nice if they let them go to the silver plan and then not have such a high co-pay. But that just gets things complicated probably.
So, um, I also wanted to just touch base, I know, over the past month, there have been a lot of concerns about behavior, about issues at bus stops, about safety on buses. And I wanted to make sure that the community knows, um, and I've had a lot of conversations, as have Nina and Justina, and our principals and leaders at the high school, um, that we take all issues very seriously. I was very impressed with how quickly issues were dealt with by Swanton School and MBU, uh, how quickly individual students' issues were dealt with, uh, and how appropriately. And then, um, but there continue to be, people are concerned, what do I do? I have concerns about safety on the bus, I have concern about other things. Our last leadership meeting as a supervisory union, we spent, it's a two-hour meeting, we spent an hour and a half of it talking about these issues, planning about possibilities, things that we can do to be proactive, and making sure that we continue to react appropriately. Simple things, like when families were looking for copies of, um, hazing grass and bullying policies, and the website is under construction, and things weren't labeled accurately. We took care of that, we made sure that things were, were named so that families could find appropriate documents for schools. Everything is up there, um, there also are references about procedures in the school handbooks. Uh, and, um, I believe tomorrow, we have another meeting with bus company, where we continue to dialogue about what we can do for prevention, uh, and what we can do to make sure, um, that people feel that they're being heard when they're concerned. And that's, I think, the biggest thing. And I wanna make sure that no matter what the procedure is, if you really feel as a parent that your child's, uh, in a bad situation, you contact your principal. And, and no matter what school you're at. Um, and that it is something that we are continued to always focus on. And I also thought it was very positive, some of the things that we are doing, building resilient schools, having really strong PBIS systems and MTSS systems. Much of the work is in the area of prevention, and Swanton is, uh, really leading the way around that. And MBU is actually doing a great deal of work, um, in the area of social-emotional learning for students who struggle. So, um, it is a strong area of commitment, both in, in prevention and in reaction. So I wanted to make that point. I think we're gonna be talking about Act forty-six afterwards next, so I'll probably be talking a lot, that'll do.
Should we have some happy news all of a sudden, and the Megan and Justina update before we get to Act forty-six?
Yes, I think that looks great. We can move the agenda around all day. It's a pretty brief update.
Yeah.
Just continuing to do fundraising, um, Debbie continues to spearhead the outreach and marketing. Um, and at this point, I don't have the latest numbers, I don't know.
We are just about halfway there between, um, about a hundred thousand dollars, between what's been, um, donated already versus, and what's been pledged. So, um, I know Debbie's, like Megan says, continuing with that. Um, I have started to reach out to some other, um, local businesses that we work with more frequently too, to, uh, talk more about donations and share with them our, our case statement that Debbie had made, um, that outlines what we have, and what we're go-, where we're going, and, and why. Um, I know that she's looking to finalize some of the, uh, the brick engraving campaign to roll out, and I think the vision for that was, um, in like mid-November, in time for the holidays, if people wanted to do that as a, as a gift too, so. I think part of that too is coming towards the end of the campaign, you know, towards November, December, because we're hoping to capture those larger donations, um, upfront, and then, um, talk about smaller fundraisers if we need to as we go along. But really, the vision was to start with those larger, um, donations, and then work down to, um, to the smaller ones, through fundraisers, through events, and, and what have you, so.
It's on track, so.
We are, it's exciting.
It's good, it's been, a lot of work is going on.
And the teachers, that is awesome.
I know.
Yeah.
Those checks kept coming, it was funny, like I was, every time I had one on my desk.
The twenty-five dollars, twenty-five.
And you have to keep in mind, really, for, for staff here, our, our paraprofessional staff are, um, for the most part, due to the nature of some of their work and behavioral stuff, wearing, able to wear jeans anyway. So that's, that's really just from a smaller percentage of our staff, that amount of money, our professional staff, so. It was great.
And it can keep rolling in, right, someone else decides to buy in.
Of course, you don't get the best deal, because you're missing some Tuesdays.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, we'll take it anytime.
And it, it's important, there are teachers that donated much more than twenty-five dollars to, to be able to wear jeans. So, it's a big, keep that in mind.
I was wondering how many teachers put in for that, yeah.
Or donated and will never wear jeans. You know, it's just, it's more about where the money's going, really.
Debbie came in and did something for the Swanton Enhancement Project, it's last week? Yeah, last week, and she brought brochures that were beautiful too, because that brochure's really nice.
Well, well, the work that these folks have done with Debbie on looking at every.
Yeah, it's really nice. And I know this one enhancement project is gonna make a donation too.
Nice.
Oh, wonderful. And I, that made me think, um, she does have some signs, and we can talk more about that when they're out, but she's working on finalizing details of the, the large signs that will be posted throughout the community, that will have her rendering the website, um, for donations, and kind of like a little thermometer gauge to, to track how we're doing, to keep them in mind.
You guys have done a really nice job of getting people to understand the importance of playground. It's not just a playground, it's about having kids that feel cared for.
This was Debbie's vision from the start.
Yeah.
Doing it through the community in this way versus, you know, on a ballot, and, um, I, I appreciate that.
I think it's great education for people to understand the importance of it. And as recreation, people choose to live in places that have, you know, it's really economic development and everything, I'm saying.
All ties out.
It's great, you guys have done a good job of showing that.
I think before the meeting started, there were some informal conversations about Remote Playground Project and whatnot. And I think what I heard was that, in fact, I, I know my comments, well, other comments, we should know by early January just how this thing is going, because two things will happen. Many people donate, make their donations in December, and if someone is really supportive of this, they may make another donation in January. So I think when we have that January award meeting, we're gonna have a really good sense of what we've got. That doesn't mean one way or the other, but I think the people who are really behind this, will, will be, will donate in December one time, or if they've already donated, they may make another one for next year, so.
And we have the outline of like where we hope to be scheduling-wise, and what the contingency plans are if we're not where we anticipate.
So, that, probably on the January agenda, that should be given a fair amount of time. Because by then, we should have some, I won't say hard num-, solid numbers, but we'll have, we'll have a good indication of how we're going.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, those donations can continue then, but when you start thinking about the January deadline for going to voters and, um, even having deposits to our playground vendor for purchasing supplies and what have you, there'll be a lot of conversations that need to be done then.
Okay, so let's go to Act forty-six, lawsuit review and action required.
So before we get there, the update, I mean, I think we were talking about it a good deal during the budget conversation, um, but for those in the community that don't know, um, the board, the State Board of Education met on October seventeenth and made a provisional decision that the Mississauga Valley Union High School District and its member school districts would become a unified school district. Um, the decision about Sheldon was not made in that meeting. I believe that they were dealing with what they consider to be easier geographical political decisions, not easy in terms of the community's support. None of these decisions are easy, but things that don't involve school districts with different configurations. So I think they were, well, I know that they were beginning with those. So, but I think it's important for people to know, and I did send out a, a little memo to staff, because I know how these things, and people get worried. Um, you know, it is something that I think we're definitely sure, that this is what the state board intends to do. Um, I did meet with, uh, Dan French, the Secretary of Education, on Thursday, the, the day after the decision, and I made sure to ask him, because the press was not really clear, you know, when they made that announcement, was that the final thing? Do, are we starting to file lawsuits now? Are we, uh, is the clock ticking for how many days we have to warn a public meeting around it? Um, and he made it very clear that that's a provisional decision. Um, just as in negotiations, you might have a tentative agreement, but it's not official until the final whole report is voted on. So I think we can still anticipate.
Yeah, that was definitely not clear.
It was not clear at all, and I'm thinking, what, what, what are we doing on Monday?
Right.
Uh, what are we all doing on Monday? Uh, so that is definitely a provisional vote, uh, and, um, I still believe that it'll be November thirtieth that we get the final report. So, given that, since we met last time, Franklin had their votes, and by a very wide margin.
I was pleased.
Determined that they were not going to sell their school and assets to the town, and that they were not going to close their school and become non-operating. Um, it was a very civil couple of meetings, um, with a lot of good dialogue, when the decision, the community really was very thoughtful. I mean, they were very thoughtful in deliberating the pros and cons, because emotions are very high. And so, um, it was, it was a very, um, long and, and challenging process for everybody involved. It absolutely was. They did make a decision to sell their athletic field and the walking paths. They were gonna do that anyway, and it made sense to do it while they had the voters all together. Um, and Franklin did, as you know, uh, those of you that were at the S U board, they did, um, sign on to the class action lawsuit, um, that is being put forward when we have a, a final decision. Um, since that time, Sheldon deliberated and decided that they too would sign on to the lawsuit, uh, and they will reconsider it at their next meeting. I think part of the difficulty that school districts are grappling with, particularly those that are not having hundreds of people come into the gym to talk about it. I mean, the other towns don't have that same kind of support, um, for a lawsuit in their community. They're not getting that kind of feedback. So, i- i- and there is not a lot of information unless you've joined in the lawsuit. So they, they were, they wanted to provisionally sign in, uh, and show support. Um, and then they will consider it as well, whether they continue or whether they, um, pull out. Highgate did the same thing.
I would like to add something at this point, 'cause I know we have to take an action here. And I've done some thinking, and I know we discussed this last time, that a lot was gonna depend on what happened at Franklin's meeting. And Franklin, I, I've kinda changed my opinion in favor of provisionally supporting them, due to the fact that they really talked about how unity was so important to them. You know, in terms of, uh, that we're in it together, and they didn't wanna be smacking everybody else by withdrawing, you know? So, so the other thing is, is, I, I think because we put in the Act forty-six proposal as a united thing, you know, group, I think it would behoove us to approve provisionally joining the, the lawsuit. But as we said, we, and as we said, we're not, uh, part of the, you know, our townspeople aren't asking us to join a lawsuit. So that's why I say provisionally.
What, would, my hesitation in signing on, we say provisionally, and it's basically to show support. And, and I am all for, you know, the unity between our schools and our towns and our communities. But if there is very little to no chance of us continuing past this provisional, is it, is it really showing anything more than us just coming out as a school and a town saying, we understand, and we, we absolutely support their decision to do that, but it's not right for, for our community members?
I think it's, I think everything you said, I would say, we support that. And as a community, we don't see the, us being willing to go down years of a lawsuit, or a long road of a lawsuit, that's why it's provisional. That's what I would say, that we don't see us getting embroiled long-term. And I, I would even suggest that we put it, uh, in the motion, if we decide to do this, that we put in there that we give, um, Julie, you know, I don't know how we say it exactly, but somehow we make it so that there's a pivot point where we would have, where Julie would have authority to get us out of it, or, you know, to say, yeah, we're not gonna do it anymore.
Does a professional show the state, at least that, I mean, at least at that point, shows what is, is, is that a school is around that? That's a plus for the original.
I did check with our school attorney, um, because I know, um, the group, Margaret McLean and her group, was very strong in their message that you can sign in, and then you can pull out at any time. My assumption is they're hoping that schools pull out because they're not merged, and that's why they wanna pull out. You know, our schools may very well, it looks like they will be merged, and I just wanted to know from our school attorney, do we have to re-, have a reason to pull out? Or can we just say, we're pulling out because we don't think that fiscally our community can support it? Because we can't use ed dollars for this.
Right.
We would have to, um, fundraise, so, and that's part of what the, uh, where are you doing that?
Well said, well said.
So, um, the, and, and that was a concern of the other communities too, and why they wanted to revisit, because they wanted more, they wanted to be supportive and ha- show unity. But they also did not wanna commit public dollars or community dollars, um, without knowing more about the strength of the suit and so forth. So, um.
Well said.
But, and our attorney did say, you can pull out of any lawsuit at any time with no penalty. The only thing is about timing, so I think it makes sense to give me some sort of authority, um, because if you're not meeting again till December nineteenth, and it's filed on December first, you could be lo-, subject to some legal.
A month's, a few weeks, certainly, yeah. And I, yeah, the fact that the community dollars, fundraising, I think that would be our decision point or whatever, that we would need to have information before we proceed it.
So it's like the second actual money comes into it, we, I, I don't know, I just, for me, it's. So it's like the second actual money comes into it, we, I, I don't know, I just, for me, it seems like it's, it's just-
It feels odd.
It does, where, um-
It does feel odd. It does feel odd.
You know, for, for me, I am more comfortable, I will state my support, and, but I just, I just don't think that it makes sense for, for our town.
Well, maybe we could move it along by having a vote, and then see what happens, unless other people want to-
Yeah.
I think in a town like Franklin, they'll have no problem raising their money.
Absolutely.
Right.
No, but in Swanton, I don't know, people-
They might have some trouble, frankly. I don't know, it depends on how much it's gonna cost and how long the road it is.
Right.
And that will depend on how many schools stick with it, absolutely, what that cost is.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Absolutely. And that was one of the discussions, particularly Sheldon had on camera, of how it felt odd to sign on to get more information and send a message, but then they might pull back again, and so if the-
Right.
If they're publicizing, we now have twenty-five school districts signed on, and five of them, or ten of them, I mean, that felt, uh,
Yeah.
They went around for a long time before they made that decision. It wasn't a light, it wasn't made lightly, that's for sure.
But it's important to Franklin, even if we, they've made it very clear that it's important to them, that we sign on, even if it is for, uh, you know, if we-
A week.
A week, even if we do get out as soon as-
It just seems so artificial.
And I think we all have to vote with what makes sense to us, you know. I think, um, in terms of, for me, being on that committee and stuff, I feel like, uh, you know, I would vote yes to do it for, with the provision that Julie has authority to get us out once the com- c- community funds are being used.
Before they're used.
Before they're, yeah.
Right, before they're used. Because I don't feel comfortable dedicating community funds at this point, but I do feel comfortable supporting them.
And how much time do you have to raise the fund?
It's like, it's like a whole, boy.
It is, it's hard, it's, it's, it is odd.
No. There's a lot of unknowns.
It is odd, yes, it is odd because of all the unknowns.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't make a motion, so.
Was there any other discussion, or do we have a-
Anybody else wanna share their, your view?
Or, I guess you make the motion first, and then you do the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's very unfortunate we've arrived at this point. Uh, I think if you would ask people four or five years ago, probably I was one of the loudest voices against the whole Act forty-six concept, but I left the legislature, and I think they modified it some. Uh, but you know, I live in the real world, and the real word, folks, this game is over, lawsuit or no lawsuit. I regret, I regret my next social security check, is the deal is done. I have no inside information, but I served on the state board, I know how things go, and, and, uh, they have aired it, they've discussed it, they've listened, they've proposed, they've reviewed and all those things, and this is where they're at. I do not see it changing. So, you know, if people wanna do a feel-good activity to make our colleagues in Franklin feel, oh, but, so, I guess you can, but I, I'm not gonna vote for it, because I think, I think it's, I think it's giving people an artificial sense of security. The deal is done, and, and I don't like to act like I know it all, but about rounding it long enough hits. The, if a lawsuit happens, you know, you, if you follow, I read about four or five different newspapers every week. I mean, if you notice up in the kingdom, uh, you know, they've all, they got a, they threw them a half a board, and said some of the people don't have to do it right now, and so can. It's, it's a big political game, but, you know, if the board wants to have a motion, that's fine, but I, I, I won't vote to support it, like, because I, I just think it's playing a game, it's, it's over. And that's a little my personal opinion, but.
Well, we do have on here action, so I do th- feel like it's something we-
Yeah, we gotta do something.
We should, I just wanted to make sure everyone's, had an air to every, any questions.
Well, we can make a motion, and it might not pass, or it might, we don't know.
Right, great.
So far with who we've heard from, it's not passing, but it could still pass.
Usually when you make the motion, you don't, that doesn't mean you have to vote positively.
Right.
Sometimes people make the motion because, for, for the purpose of discussion, or for the purpose of moving forward.
Right.
Yeah.
The chair can't make the motion.
Can I make a motion even though I'm gonna vote yes to it?
Yes.
Then I'll make the motion that we, um, join the Act forty-six lawsuit in support of the other communities in the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union.
With the provision that-
With the provision that, um, we, that Julie has the authority to, uh, pull us out of that lawsuit, um, prior to any monies being incurred. There's that sense.
Sounds good.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
John, a second?
Right.
Okay, discussion.
So I won't be voting for that motion, I'm voting against it, uh-
What's that?
I won't be voting for the motion, I'll be voting against it. Um, I was waiting for a motion to be made, um, before sharing my feelings. I think it's time to just get on with it. Uh, and a lawsuit, I don't think is productive, and I, uh, there's an interesting reading right now, if you Google, uh, Act forty-six lawsuits right now, there's a, uh, quite an article that the California Record, um, has on, uh, someone who brought suit, and I believe it covered many areas. I don't see what other areas that it can be brought in a suit. And, uh, a lower court, not, uh, not a Vermont Supreme Court, so I don't know if it was appealed, but it was, the lawsuit was, uh, thrown out on every, every, uh, argument that it was against, and so I think it's just a, a, a waste of time. So I'm ready to, uh, move forward, I think the quicker we do, uh, the better it is for staff and for our kids.
May I make one more point in the discussion here? And that is, I'm just concerned that we are seen as the big bad wolf in this, because we have the most people. So if Act forty-six happens, we are seen as the ones who have all the power. And if we're the only school that doesn't vote to support them, I'm just a little concerned about how that might be read.
I have that same concern.
I guess I'm less in, inclined to consider appearances. I'm like, I understand it, but in my heart, in my head, that is so utterly false about our community. Uh, and, you know, for me, it, it, it really is kind of a jab at us to think that after all of these years, where, where we've had this agreement, where we've had equal representation, despite size, that Swanton is all of a sudden going to turn around and eat everybody, uh, you know, so-
Well, that's a good point.
Uh, that's just, that's more of my two cents, I'll shut up then.
I don't think you should shut up, I think we should have diversity. If we always all vote yes and always all vote no, I think that's a problem.
Yep.
So I think this is good.
Unfortunately, I, I kind of agree with Dawn too, but I think it's been a, this, decision was made, nothing's been happened, but-
You know, I guess my biggest concern is, is there's so much work to do-
There's so much work to do.
To do this right, and I'd like to rather see our time and energy saying, let's all work together to make this thing as possible as we can, rather than continuing to try to get out of it, dealing with it.
At the same time, though, are we really saying we're devoting any extra energies? We're not, it's, you, the motion itself states that we'll pull out before any monies are incurred, so is it a matter of expending energy and getting on with things? Or is it just simply showing support for a fellow community member?
There's, there's irony in come together so we can stay apart.
Right. Excellent point.
There is irony in that, that's very well said.
Because I know how I felt when I, when I heard that Franklin was gonna pull out of this whole thing, I was like, we were all supposed to be together in this, and they were considering pulling out, now I must feel like, are we not being a part of it? I don't know, it's just, it's a, it's a struggle.
You, you can see both sides.
Yeah.
Can really see both sides. So should we take a vote?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. The nays have it, so the motion is not carried.
And that doesn't mean we don't wanna work with them to get the best possible solution, yeah.
Absolutely. Do you wanna make a, a statement for the minutes around that?
That'd be a good idea, thanks. That's a great idea.
I agree.
I think we will continue to work with the, uh, Act forty-six committee and, uh, partners in the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union to bring this to a positive conclusion for the students. It's about the students, you know, whether it, whether we have hurt feelings, or to remind anybody else's about the governance structure, that's decided upon, for the one that's, what's best for the students.
It's for the students, that's a really good point.
I'm okay with that statement.
I am too. Nope, we don't care about this.
No, no, I love the part about the kids, I'm just, like, I, I also want it to be clear that, you know, we, we still support their decisions to, to move forward, it's just, it's not where our focus is going to be.
Yeah, I, I think it's very clear, we certainly want to take and work with them.
Yeah.
To come to a, a, a resolution, but I think the, the final decision is, what's gonna be best for the students in the long run? And that is that we all work together and, uh, trust each other. This is kind of a trust issue. And you're getting in the way of the World Series game, so you're gonna-
Oh, okay, so let's move it a little bit.
This thing you said all night.
I wasn't, when did it start? Okay, sorry.
Eight oh nine.
At nine?
Eight oh nine.
Eight oh nine, okay, okay, thank you for that. So, let's talk about our future meeting dates.
Is there anything else on Act forty-four, or are we good?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if it was just a lawsuit, okay.
Thank you. Thank you all for the discussion, I think that was good to have a good discussion. Okay, so, um, future meeting dates, we said something about December-
Potential special meeting on Monday?
Yes.
Potential special meeting on Monday. Wasn't there something sooner than December nineteenth that we talked about?
No, it was January, uh, right after the first of the year.
January. Second or third.
Second or third.
Okay, but there wasn't something earlier in December?
Not before December, no.
Uh-uh.
Okay. Okay, so not until January?
Unless you have a special meeting on the snowboard.
Okay, and then the board meeting, yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Uh, uh, can I get clarification, uh, Julie, from you, uh, sorry, uh, real quick, on, you said, assume no lawsuit, assume no injunction, assume we're right on schedule, November thirtieth, they say, uh, a provisional, uh, a board of the, uh, uh, the chair and the clerk, uh, from all the boards come together to do the budget.
Yeah. Including N V U, so they're going-
Right, but, so, so how does anyone get, you, I thought you did say there will be a voting for board, the new board on town meeting day, so how are people gonna get signatures?
Okay.
If, if they wanna run for that new board, because, uh, because you only have December then, or, right?
I, yeah.
I mean, those, no, those are due at the end of January.
No, those are usually-
April, March, or fifth of June.
They're anyways, they're, yeah, they're up to us.
So, there are so many different timelines, one of them includes whether you decide to have a quick seven oh six process to amend the articles of agreement that they draft and give to us when they're still in draft form. Which doesn't necessarily make sense, because what we have in the imposed, um, articles is, they would be imposing equal representation upon us.
Proportional, I thought.
They, no, the, the draft articles are, would be imposed, if they were adopted by the State Board today, they are having two representatives from Highgate, Swanton, and Franklin on winning board.
Six, what, what?
We could, uh, we could go through a process and change that to three, um, but I think there are a lot of, there are only ninety days to get that done between there and-
When were those drafted?
They were drafted early in the fall, you can look at them on the state website, I haven't-
And who drafted them?
The Agency of Ed, and they've been through the State Board of Ed, but they have not been adopted yet, because they've been doing this piece first.
So I thought the whole, along, I thought that was gonna be proportional, like, even the seven oh six study was gonna be proportional.
Well, that, 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 the seven oh six study would have to have been, committee would have had to have been proportional.
Committee. Right. But the new board doesn't have, it's-
That is one of the big disagreements that has been going through our community.
Mm-hmm.
The state assures us that they have legal opinion and court precedent that allows for proportional representation under certain circumstances, um, and there are some materials that explain some of that, that I'd be happy to share.
Proportional. You just said, uh, equal.
Equal, sorry, equal.
So what's the difference?
They believe they will do, everybody has to, it's very much exactly like N V U.
At large, it is.
Uh, at large.
Wow.
Um, because there, you think, you would have the same number of people from each town, and all towns would be voting on those.
Right, but, but, but what I think has not been done historically in this community, but could be done, is I could, a person from Swanton could be listed as the Franklin rep.
No, that is in the rules that, in the draft-
Two from each town.
That it has to be, you have to reside in Franklin to rep, you know, you have to reside in Highgate.
I'm not sure it's at large then.
It's, it's, it's called a hybrid, that's why, and there are, I'd be happy to forward you the documents that they have.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that.
And I have not, because of where we are, we haven't done a lot of conversation, and going that deep in the-
Yeah, I, I, it's, right. But it, I mean, so people who wanna run are gonna have less than a month to figure that out, if they wanna run.
Right. Oh, yeah, the whole thing is very condensed, you're exactly right.
Well, let's say the five people from Swanton, three from Highgate, and three from Franklin.
Two, two, and two. According to, if, if we go through the, if we allow the articles to be imposed upon us, and we don't go through the process of creating our own, um, with-
So that, in the final vote, the person in Swanton with the least votes-
What if one person- This is so-
Could be our candidates.
Yeah.
You have, right, you have a bigger, you have, yes, let's say-
So the person with the least votes in Swanton might have more votes than Highgate, Franklin, and top poll winner.
Right.
Let's see the lawsuit.
Boy, they're really backtracking.
That's what I'm saying, you can't, it's not-
They're really backtracking.
I get it at large district, but you can't, you can't restrict, you can't restrict, uh, that, yeah.
Well, it's a hybrid model, not gonna pretend to be an expert, because I've looked at the charts, and I'm-
Well, I think you're right, but I think they're wrong.
Well, that's, well, here's the issue, is, you know, it's, it's, if they, if they impose it upon us, we're, we're not the ones at fault.
Exactly.
And, in turn, if you, somebody gets sued, state or whoever's there, but couldn't-
So, in the district you came from.
Oh, they didn't do it, they did it proportionally, not equally.
Right. And you can have three people sitting there, but they each have one third of a vote or something like that.
Right, but Dawn's example is good, because if Swanton had five candidates, in theory, if Swanton turned out, all of those candidates might have more than the highest height in Franklin.
Right.
Right.
Well, let's do some research on this, you know, just all of us looking at it, and maybe Julie, if you, if you don't mind, send us that out, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
I'm happy to.
Okay, the web link or something?
That might keep you on the board.
Yep.
So this is good, so, if all these worries might be moved.
Well-
Who knows? Anyway, so, anybody have anything else they wanna add before I close the meeting?
We don't have anything for executives, I think.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-two. We did go over, sorry, guys.